See the actual bills are all right here.
Okay.
Started.
That's in a way that we're open and free looking like okay.
Yeah.
That's what it is, just a hundred percent pure meat, so that's the only thing there.
Yeah.
Very good.
Too good.
That could be a dish.
Just let me know when you're ready, Randy.
Whenever you're ready.
Oh, okay. Like to call the meeting to order? It got moved by the court. We can base that way.
It's like in school, just to the wall.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. There were two parties here over the weekend, so they.
That was funny, we all went.
We'll make it work. Okay, so roll call.
Oh, yeah. Councilman Neves?
Here.
Councilman Bill?
Yeah.
Supervisor Monday?
Here.
Councilman Brown?
Here.
Councilman Belushi?
Here.
First order of business will be to do payment of the claims. Someone wanna introduce that?
Yeah, I will.
Doug and Ed, okay? Total of abstract nine to the general fund for September twenty first, twenty twenty three is nineteen thousand three hundred and eighty nine dollars and nineteen cents. And the total of abstract nine for the highway fund is five hundred and twenty four thousand eight hundred dollars and seventy two cents. Just let you know, four hundred and thirty two thousand nine hundred and ninety eight dollars of that is chips. And the truck payment was made for fifty six thousand nine eighty five and sixty cents. So the regular monthly bills was thirty four thousand eight sixteen sixty one.
Fifty four, yeah.
Yeah. And the total claims for September twenty first is five hundred and forty four thousand one hundred and eighty nine dollars and ninety one cents. All in favor of approving the claims, say aye.
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 Second, we're gonna take care of some of the old business carried over from last month. I'll do it in a different order than what it shows on here because there'll be more discussions with the code enforcement. Regarding the salt plume water testing, there was a question about that. I did call to and look back at the records to find out that when the salt contamination issue was dealt with, all the residents that were considered in what they call the salt plume area were given the opportunity to have their wells tested periodically. Well, not really an opportunity where we have to do it. And so twice a year, letters are sent out by Cedarwood Engineering and anyone who responds and is in the salt plume area can arrange to have a test. And the town hall here is tested on a monthly basis. So I do have all the invoices here, I mean not the invoices, all the test results here if anyone wants to see. The people being tested are not on the water system, but they could potentially have a problem. So far, there's been no problem. But I do have them all here if anyone wants to see them later on. The second old business would be the short term rental moratorium. We have a new list that I received today. And that list, what they had been giving me in the past for twenty places was really twenty certification numbers. Some people have more than one address under the same certification number. I got a revised list here, it's up there if anyone wants to see it. And the total's thirty. It's still below what we know is happening, but there are thirty certified plus the ones that are owned by Kent and Vannedool are separate on this list. And both of these are available if any of you want to see them. As far as the moratorium goes, we have the option now to either extend it. It will expire, I think it's October tenth. So we either need to come up with our public law that we want or we can extend the moratorium and give ourselves more time. It's up to you what you wanna do.
I think we should extend it.
I think we should extend it too.
I heard.
I think we should.
Okay.
I don't think we're prepared to pass along that.
No. And I do wanna get a letter out to everyone in town to see what their opinion is too because not everyone came to the public hearing, but they may have an opinion, they may not even have been able to attend. So secretary's working on that.
Do we have to win that for the Florida resolution to pass a moratorium or can we just add?
We would need to, well, do you know Cynthia, what do we do to extend the moratorium?
Do we have to bring another resolution?
No, I don't know, I don't know.
We could, we could pass a resolution to extend it, but I don't know if we have, I don't think we need a public hearing again, but we need to find out exactly what we need to do.
So I'll make a motion that we take whatever steps are necessary to extend the moratorium.
I'll second it.
Okay.
We can take.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, everyone.
Wait a minute, step.
It's okay.
Necessary.
To extend the moratorium.
To extend. Who, I, I, I heard Randy make.
I made the motion and seconded it and we all voted in favor.
Okay, couldn't hear the second, okay, then everybody said aye.
Yes.
Ayes.
Okay.
So we just have to find out what the procedure is, I think there is one that we'd have to notify the state, but I'm not sure. Okay. And then the last bit of old business is the code enforcement. So I do have the resolution in here that does show a salary, annual salary. I thought it should be similar to like the animal control officer. We don't know how much work this is going to take for him or her, whoever we decide to hire. But this is basically just to get letters of interest. It's not really a hiring yet until we see who, who we get the letters from.
Yep.
So does anyone wanna bring that motion to the floor?
Charlie. Charlie.
Okay, got it.
And did you second it Ed?
Doug.
Oh, Doug, okay.
Wait, I couldn't tell you.
Doug seconded it.
I did, okay.
Somebody said you did.
So wait, so well. I, I'm not sure, so this is, you're, you're doing, we're doing this actual thing?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I wasn't sure if you were saying something different than this, okay.
No, the only difference between this one and the one before was what the salary would be.
Okay.
That's the only difference. So it's whereas towns may appoint an enforcement officer who will be responsible for enforcing the codes, ordinances, rules, regulations and local laws, and whereas the town of Thurmond is in need of someone to ensure compliance with duly adopted regulations in the town of Thurmond, and whereas the code enforcer duties shall include enforcement of any codes, ordinances, rules, regulations or local laws and will be authorized to issue citations or file formal complaints, be it resolved, the town of Thurmond is accepting letters of interest for the position of code enforcement officer. Salary will be an annual amount of three thousand six hundred dollars. Letters of interest can be submitted to the town clerk at P O Box twenty nine, Athol, New York, one two eight one oh, or drop off in person at the office of the town clerk. And when I spoke to someone about the short term rentals, they said when we do have a code enforcer, he could feel free or she could feel free to call them about anything related to the enforcement of short term rental rules. So that was pretty nice, I thought. Okay. New, uh, under new business.
Any discussion, any vote?
Thank you so much. Just moving right along. Okay. Is there any discussion about the code enforcer, any?
Oh, I just have a question, do you want me to put this, where do, where do you wanna advertise this?
Letters of interest, do the, does it have to be in the paper, can it be on our website?
Paper is so, oh, what do you?
I know.
What do you, I, I guess I got, what do you guys think, is, should, the paper is so useless that maybe, I mean, the people, but.
Well, should we put it on the website?
Probably, you know, you still have three days of it and you have the website, it probably wouldn't be appropriate
Yeah.
'cause some people still do post our, so.
Look at it.
Hmm.
So well.
We probably should, I, I would think.
Yeah.
Think I know somebody that might be interested, he's a sheriff, sheriff patrol right now. He's just working it out with his boss to see if it doesn't coincide.
Yeah.
Okay.
He lives right here in Thurmond, so it might be.
Yeah. I, I like this, this recommendation better because the last time there was a question about, you know, Warren County law, that he's only gonna have to deal with local laws.
Yes.
It has nothing to do with Warren County, strictly local.
Right.
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 Yeah.
I think this is very good stuff.
Okay. So that's good, you have a candidate too.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Where can we find these local laws?
We have a binder of them here that has all the local laws, the town clerk has one in her office. Yep, I don't know if they're on the website, the local laws.
No, but certainly something we could look at putting in, but we could probably learn.
They're gonna be out.
Yeah. Local laws on the website, that would be a good idea.
You'll get there.
Yeah, yeah, it'll take a little while, but Kathy and I will kind of, kind of learn.
It's getting, it's getting a lot better than it was.
Yeah.
We'll see this, yeah.
And be, and both of you still need to have your training, right, with him?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not yet.
Okay. Yeah, the new website is not as user, user friendly, I guess it's just new, that's all, it'll just take a little time. Okay, and let's see.
Did you guys vote?
No.
Not yet, no.
Okay.
There's no more discussion, right?
No.
Nope, okay, then we'll take a vote.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. So there's just um, a couple, one other new business at the, at the um, fun day that we had last weekend. I met a woman who's interested in being a youth director here. She is really involved in archery, she competes in archery, and she was going to come today, but she didn't make it. But she has a lot of ideas for the youth, to have an ongoing, not just like four parties a year, but very ongoing youth. She has four children of her own, three of which came to the fun day, and it was really a good time. And at the fun day, there were two other parents of young children who wanna be involved with the youth. So I was hoping that we could meet with her and potentially hire her to be a youth director. I had a meeting at the county with the county youth yesterday, and there will be three grant funding opportunities for us this year, last year there was two. We received four thousand dollars for the archery and nineteen hundred and twenty dollars for our youth sport, for our youth development program. They're also going to have this year a youth team sports for infrastructure. So we could plan something. I was thinking maybe up in the woods behind the rec field of having disc golf, I asked her if that would count, and she said it would. There's going to be some Zoom meetings coming up that I'll be attending to find out more about it and how much money we'd be entitled to and how to go about filing for the grants. Um, the other new business I have is, I wanted to let people know that I received an email. Residents in local counties are being advised of election official impersonation. Apparently, people are contacting voters with accusations that they are illegally registered to vote. And they just wanna make sure everybody knows that board of election staff do not visit homes or voters in person, so anyone who comes to your house is not real.
And, and if somebody gets one of those visits, what should they do?
I do have phone numbers here. In Warren County, you would call five one eight seven six one six four five eight.
Thank you.
And they do suggest you try to find, look at any identification they offer, but don't interact any further with them.
Get a license plate if you can.
Yeah.
Yeah. What a shame that people doing that.
What did you call, is there being approached by, would you, how did, how did you phrase that?
The election official impersonation?
Yeah, that's okay.
Yeah. Um, I did wanna let everyone know we have new COVID tests, if anybody wants to take some of them home. We do have an archery class on the twenty eighth for children eight and up. I'll have a meeting October twentieth with Connect All, which is going to try to figure out solutions to the internet issues that we have here. Or in all rural anywhere that's not covered by internet, so that should be pretty interesting.
When's that? When's the internet?
Uh, the internet, it's October twentieth and it's through Connect All.
Is it something that you're just talking with or?
I think it's county, I, yeah, I think county people would have to go, but I could bring back any information that I get there. Um, I'm having the furnace checked on October third, make sure everything's working before it gets too cold. And.
Have we had our generator serviced?
No, but I think that's coming up as well. Yeah. And.
Question.
Mm-hmm.
Where did our other generator go?
Which other generator?
The one that's at in front of the.
The one that was up here is in the building, I think up by the landfill, right, the, the highway building up by the landfill. And I think that's pretty much all that I have other than.
You got another one?
He's got another question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Does our animal control officer give you monthly reports?
He did, I get reports, um, but not from him, I get them from someone at, at the county level.
Okay, 'cause in the last month, there's been three animal dogs, or four animal dogs in town of Thurmond that one or two sheriffs that went through, is our animal control officer not available or?
Well, I know he works full time, so I don't know when those calls came in.
Some at ten o'clock, some at five o'clock in the afternoon, some at ten thirty in the morning.
Mm-hmm. I know that sheriffs have been, and not just in our town, but in other towns as well, picking them up and bringing them to the S P C A in Queensberry. And I know from a meeting I was at at the county that the county is now going to be contracting with S P C A. As far as our animal control officer, I don't know, I haven't spoken to him. But the sheriffs came because he didn't, is that what you're?
Well, no, that, I, I guess if you have animal problems, you call nine one one, they send a sheriff to it.
Yeah.
Why doesn't the sheriff contact our animal control, for, I mean, we're paying them to do animal control?
Yeah, I don't know.
Why isn't he involved in, many, done four of them and more?
Mm-hmm.
They've all been done by one or two sheriffs.
Right, I know, and that's not just here, but that's been happening around, so.
Yeah, right up in the county, but this is, these are all came to the county, to the town of Thurmond, Henry Westcott wrote, I mean.
Yeah. But what's the shame about that is though, instead of being brought to the shelter that we contract with, they're being brought to the S P C A in Queensberry, so someone who wants to get their dog back has to drive.
Yeah.
Pay them more money.
And the S P C A in Queensberry is only open a couple hours and you have to make an appointment to meet them there.
Yeah.
And what, what, what do we give them, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars this year, counting?
Mm-hmm.
How is that feasible to give them that kind of money and you gotta make an appointment to go get your dog back or see a dog that you might want, and that?
Yeah, they don't, they're not fully staffed, yeah.
And they're not there, I mean.
Mm-hmm. I've heard that from even people who wanted to adopt dogs from there, that their phone calls aren't returned and they, and they.
And are they, are they still an after profit?
I don't know that, I would imagine they are, S P C A, yeah. Mm-hmm.
And we just gave them nine, or an extra, what, thirty thousand dollars to say that they're not open?
Well, I don't think.
And an after profit, if someone gets bit by a dog and you go to the S P C A and ask for a report on it, they won't give it to you because they're not for profit.
Really?
Yes.
I get the reports for any dog bites that happen in Thurmond now, so.
You just had one reason?
Yep, two, I actually had two.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Um, okay. So I guess that this, that's all I have, so I'll open up to privilege of the floor.
I got another question, you said on the short term rentals, you had thirty certified. What, what does certify mean, is that like?
Thirty?
Registered?
They have a cert, certification number from the county, that means that they're signed up to pay the occupancy tax.
Interesting, so it's a registered short, short term rental?
Right.
I talked to Lisa this morning, she's still got twenty.
I know, I talked to her too today, and she told me that you called, yep.
Yeah, she said she.
The reason why it was twenty, there's twenty certification numbers. Some people have more than one address, but they get the same certification number.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's what, and if you want the new list.
So my neighbor had ten of them under the same certification.
Well, let's see, this one has three, six under one, one has three under one, another one has two.
So that's where the numbers get.
And you, you have a separate list for the ones that the duals on?
Yeah, the ones that, um.
Did they say why they give you a separate list for that?
I think because they have so many, they're classified differently. I don't know, but this, this is the list that they have for their name. All, all of these in addition to the, but these are just.
Yeah, this is all along the county, I just.
Right, it's Warren County, and maybe that's why, maybe they're just like a countywide, they have a corporation, or I don't know what.
Right. So these are the ones they have that are registered?
Right.
That they know of.
Okay.
Right. But you'd have to look at the addresses to know, like the two here, three in Athol right there. I don't see Thurmond at all, but I don't know whether the Warrensburg.
Well, some of them are Warrensburg address, but it's like sixty four Parker Cross Road or Garnet Lake Road.
Yeah. Yeah.
They're listed as Warrensburg, but that's the mailing address.
Yeah, right.
So.
Now, the, the occupancy money or tax that they pay for that, does that go to the Warrensburg or Thurmond, depending on how the address?
It should really.
Well, it all goes to the county.
Okay.
So the county, the county collects all occupancy tax money, and then they disperse a portion of it back to each town based on a formula they have. So it really doesn't matter where it's collected.
Right.
I mean, a lot of these are actually in Thurmond, but then they have the Warrensburg address.
That really doesn't, we do not get just the occupancy tax from these people, it all goes into a pool.
It goes into a pool, yeah.
Yep.
Then they divvy.
And then they divvy it up.
Paula wanted me to ask if you could put it in the minutes or on the website that we're still looking for someone to take over the Christmas baskets.
Okay.
She's been trying word of mouth, we haven't had much luck.
Okay.
So if somebody could get it out there, it's all voluntary, of course.
And when it, it's usually two events, right?
It's usually a week, it's, the Christmas bazaar comes right after Thanksgiving, and then it's usually a few days after that, that we have one day here, usually Friday or Saturday, and we took the baskets and delivered.
So right after Thanksgiving, you have the bazaar, and then at some point in time, everyone gets together and makes up the baskets.
Probably in December. Right. Right.
And that's done when usually?
First week in December.
First week in December, okay. And what does that entail, they would be organizing?
Organizing, shopping, collecting donations from Walmart, Raischopper and Union, they do give us money. And a lot of it is organizing and the shopping and getting all the things needed, setting up. And then we use a, there's usually volunteers to do it and then deliver it.
Right. And delivering, yeah.
Delivering, yeah. We usually do about thirty.
You do about thirty, okay.
Give and take.
That's pretty good.
Paula has some supplies, she has a list, and her phone number, she said you could put on there, two two six three.
Oh, really, she doesn't mind her phone number being on it?
No, she doesn't, if someone's interested.
Okay. Oh, for the person who's going to, yeah.
Right, yeah. And we'll look for, at the time of it then advertise for baked goods and, and that sort of stuff.
Right. And how did you do that, through emails or?
A lot of it's word of mouth, um, going on a couple of the like news and notes, um.
Okay. Mm-hmm.
And there's a few, you just call personally 'cause who knows, like.
Right. And you have about thirty people, does she have the list of the thirty people, or how do people get on the list?
Yeah. If anyone in town has someone that they know would need a basket that year, they've had a tragic event or whatever, um, they can call her. And if someone that's off the list, without his reasons, you know, they die or whatever, we take them off.
Is it all food?
No, oh no.
What, what kind of things go?
We, um, we usually try and find one, sort of like a big item, one year we did those fleece blankets
Okay.
and, um, one, like a big item, and then, oh, some essentials, um, notepads and calendars and, uh, there's a man in town that makes Christmas ornaments for us.
Okay.
The quilters usually donate some, the papultos and different things, um, just useful household items.
Okay, so it's not just.
Not all food.
Okay.
And then we put food in for some people that are diabetic and.
Food, okay. Mm-hmm.
And they, they usually come out pretty nice, actually.
And you put them all into baskets and then?
Yeah, we get, well, we've been using plastic bowls 'cause baskets did work.
Okay, that's a good idea, yeah.
So a big plastic bowl, and then we get the, um, that plastic big sort of bag kind of thing,
mhm.
wrapping around and then tied at the top, it looks really nice.
Mm-hmm.
And, um.
Of her list of thirty people, does she, does she have it like separated, would we know who is diabetic or who has any type of?
There's usually a handful that we, we, we know, um, generally.
Okay.
But we know, you know, that, that's generally what they can and can't eat, so it's not like you are afraid to put in something.
Right.
We have a few people that are couples, so we kind of double up on them.
Okay.
And we keep track of them and move them in.
I'll ask her to give me the list.
So we'll put in, you know, wool hat or gloves, so we did slippers when you're.
Oh, that's good.
It does involve a little planning.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So.
Well, I'll.
That would be helpful if, if the word could get out a little farther.
Yeah. I'll ask Kathy to make a flyer, we can hang that up around too, and I can maybe put something out on this board, but.
That would be nice. That would be good.
Think the flyer works pretty good, she usually hangs them up, post office, libraries, stuff like that.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Is there any, Keith?
Um, I was curious as to how the town's working on the, uh, coordinates for the noise and stuff.
The noise ordinance?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's already a local law.
Already a local law?
Yeah.
So you, you're done working on it, or is it?
Oh no, it's already been submitted and approved, it's a local law now, okay.
Or?
We're, we're waiting for a code enforcement officer so we can actually thwart it.
Yeah, so. But there's been no complaints, so.
Well.
Yeah.
Hopefully there won't be. Hopefully if there is, I think it'll be in place and, well, at least you have the law that, you know, the police can.
Yeah, it's in effect from ten to seven in the morning, I think, ten to seven. We haven't had any complaints, I mean, you know, I don't think it's, uh.
Well, you know, when there's nothing in place and somebody takes advantage of it big time, they, they send the shocker you out and hopefully, you know.
Yeah, it's. It's a protection, it's a way to make anything like that ever from, from happening again, it's pretty basic.
Right.
Most people, I mean, I've never had a noise complaint other than that one, so.
I command the board to work quickly on that.
Mm, thanks.
And get this done and it's on its own.
Gee, okay, so I would like to have a motion to go into executive session for matters relating to collective negotiations under the Taylor Law. Can I have a second on that?
No.
Doug, okay.
I got Doug up to second, I didn't hear the first.
Me.
We found it related to.
Collective negotiations under the Taylor Law. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we'll be.
If you want, okay, if you want to search my route, I'll let you. Yeah, you wanna look at mine, if you wanna open the list, though, if you wanna.
I would like the list, I really would.
Here, I'll make you coffee, okay?
I mean, we're two.
Let it tip, I don't have any, we got, we got, we know, uh, oh yeah, one. You want coffee?
I would, could I get one as well, Cynthia, can I get one as well?
Yep.
Thank you.
I have my coffee, you seem ready.
You got them neighbors yet?
I have one that's renting next door.
I think you're good.
It's in three others potential, right on our road.
But did you, you got them all, it's all?
It's not finalized, but yes, it's sold. It's sold.
Sold.
They just didn't close it.
I think that, that looks.
I don't think the closing's gonna be till February first. There I am, thank you.
Yeah, you should see, some of them had a bunch of them.
I guess.
That's why you didn't have the right number.
That's. I thought we're today, that'd be, go ahead and sign off.
I thought we're today, we go out at nine o'clock.
Yeah, yeah.
They had, they had nineteen in June, twenty in July, twenty in August, and she said twenty this morning.
Yeah. This must be Daggett Lake here that says all the Sundays on the road, right?
Twenty Dog Road, thank you.
That must be Daggett Lake.
It is, it's, it's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you paint on a copy of this, I don't know really what it did, I'll let you look at it, is it?
I don't know my glasses on, but.
Well, it, it shows. It shows the numbers again. The dresses.
Well, the dresses are on there, right?
Yeah, and then it shows, oh, I mean, I have a name.
Yeah, I'll just figure out something similar. Everybody on this list is registered with the county?
Uh, uh, I guess so, I guess so.
Because the last list, my next door neighbors, they were not.
Are they on it? Are they on the list?
They're on the list, well, I don't know if they're on this list, the latter, and, and all.
You're, they're happy people there, right?
Yeah. Yeah, they're on this list.
I seen them go by a couple times lately.
They're calling themselves Maplewood Manor? Oh my God. Of all people, you should, should know.
You don't know, they're gonna do it like this, honestly.
No, no, I don't.
Yeah, I should be giving the lady.
Right, I know, it's, um, and right now, it's, um, as far.
Bangdong, isn't it?
Yeah, as far as I know.
Yeah, what is?
Um, it's only one part of this park, so at least we'll, you know, talk about the acre.
Are you gonna look up on that, the Bangdongs at all?
No, no.
You don't know them?
No, 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 not, no, no, because they're still on.
What's that?
What's that?
Yeah, they're different parts. Yeah.